Good evening. I will now call tonight's Board of Education meeting to order and the secretary will call the role of each board member to determine if a quorum is present, please respond by saying here.
Dr. Barth Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
Here.
Mr. Groupie?
Here.
Mr. Kempton?
Here.
Mrs. Moon?
Here.
Ms. Nichols?
Here.
Ms. Schrader is here.
Thank you. The members will rise, please join us in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone from the audience who would like to address the board may do so when the agenda item they want to address is being discussed. Before you approach the podium, please sign in on the sheet provided at the media table, and as you approach the podium, please provide your name. If you have printed correspondence you want to share with the Board of Education, please leave those items at the media table and Mr. Satin and will share those with us at the conclusion of the meeting. Remarks may be limited to three minutes and to one appearance. Questions directed to the board may not always be answered immediately. All questions will be responded to by an appropriate person as soon as possible. Persons who wish to suggest items for the agenda should contact the superintendent. Sedalia School District Foundation?
Three quick items tonight. Today we were able to award a $500 mini grant to Heber Hunt. So we're always excited when you can award a mini grant for those building administrators that have any ideas or anything, we're always looking for new ideas for mini grants. So we're happy to do that. Coming up, we've got major saver. We have the Sonic Thank You Drinks for those staff members that have donated to the foundation. And then Senior Awards Night, put it on your calendar for May 1st, our reception will be in the Commons area. And that's an opportunity for us to have our students meet our donors, our scholarship recipients meet our donors, so we're looking forward to that.
Thank you. Missouri National Education Association, NEA?
You can just say it's Tyler here. Got quite the crowd here tonight. Nothing too new from last time. We started our membership drive earlier this month, so shout out Bob Satin and for sending that out. I'm sure I'm gonna have a lot more to send to you this spring, but got a few responses back, so we're pretty excited to add a few more people into the loop. The big thing that I saw on your guys' agenda tonight was the salary increases, and just wanted you guys to know that NEA wholeheartedly supports that, not just because it's a raise, which we all enjoy, but it's also, two years ago, or at least since I started coming down here and yapping in front of you guys, that was really our kind of goal minimum for our district. And so we're really excited that, you know, Dr. Fraley, the rest of the superintendents, you guys are starting to see the value of that. Also shout out Dr. Fraley, I had a question for him today about something with this. He responded with transparency like he's proven, so we appreciated that. What I found interesting, just to give you guys some context, last week we had our superintendent's advisory committee meeting. And I always like to use those as a moment to kind of poll our members, gather celebration concerns, things like that, just to hand to Dr. Fraley so he has like a snapshot of the climate right now. And I don't think, and Dr. Fraley may tell me wrong, but I don't think there was anything on there about salaries. It was all other things, so salaries seemed to be pretty, you know, you guys are moving in the right direction, and so we greatly appreciate it. There was other things on there, but otherwise that, that kind of one nugget, I think we're, I think we're in a good place, so we appreciate you guys for focusing on that these last couple of years. Do you guys have anything for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
SCEA? Mr. Norton, vision of a graduate?
I don't have many friends, but I brought them all with me tonight. Mondays are Mondays, especially when you're a high school principal, and some Mondays when you have board meetings, you don't look forward to maybe spending the evening with the Board of Education, even though I enjoy your company. But tonight, I get to bring a lot of friends with me and celebrate them, so it is a great night to come to a board meeting after a long Monday. Behind you, you see our captains, our leaders within several of our groups and organizations here at Smith Cotton. These are several of the leaders of our fall sports and activities here at Smith Cotton, and I want to read just a little bit about them. These leaders took on a role to lead their fellow students. They've shown week in and week out that leadership isn't easy, but it's worth every minute of it. They became the voice of their coach or director. They had to have the tough conversations with their peers. They had to quickly adapt on the field to challenges and setbacks. They had to show their teammates that you always keep your head up, no matter what. So I would like to recognize these young men and women. For boys soccer, please step forward. Alex Devilla? Alex Kapovic? And Jake Bunker? Marching band? Lily Carroll? Faith Barkfelt? Football? Mylon Hawkins? A'Shawn Brown? Beau Gray? Gavin Jackson? Parker Brown? Softball? Kyla Hawkins? Grace West? Dance? Faith Lewis? Sky Dennis? Mariana Troiner? I don't think cheer was able to join us tonight. Do I have any cheer? They were unable to join us tonight. Boys swim? Finley Hume? Julius Washington? Girls tennis? Eleanor Beard? Junior ROTC Smith Cotton Raiders? Thomas Gardner? Genesis May? Cross country? Julia Kirchner? Jorge Contreras? And, on the fly, with a moment's notice, I did not add volleyball, and I spoke to their captains, Ms. Ally Case, who was unable to be here tonight, and Lauren Holman, who stepped up and was able to come tonight, so I appreciate you bailing me out tonight, Lauren, to represent volleyball. These young men and women are exactly why we're focused on vision of graduate for all our students. This is what we want. We want them to step out, take a chance, and lead their fellow peers, because these transferable skills that they have shown on the field will pay off in the long run in everything they do. Congratulations.
And we will be exiting the stage for the next three items on our agenda, because we're gonna have a show and tell.
Alright, hello. I am RJ Lindstrom. I am a board member at the Boys and Girls Club here in Sedalia, and I've been on the board for, I think, 12 or 13 years now, so I've been involved for a long time. And we just wanted to update you guys on a project that we're working on, that we recently went public with. So a little bit of history, the Boys and Girls Club, actually, the Boys Club has been in Sedalia since 1960, serving boys down in Convention Hall. And I actually just learned tonight that in 1990, we moved into a partnership with the school district and started offering programming in a couple of the elementary schools after school at that time. And now we've grown our program into all of our sites. We serve over 1,600 kids through 14 locations, 14 club sites in eight communities all over west central Missouri. So that is 1,600 members, and we serve an average of 520 kids every single day in those programs, many of them in the schools represented here for the district. Forty-eight percent of the members qualify for free and reduced lunch, and 80% are elementary age, and 20% are teens and tweens. So what we currently offer, we offer 20-plus different programs in these after-school programs, from STEAM and STEM activities to lifestyle, Passport to Manhood, all sorts of things to help kids study and become better, better citizens, right? So, couple of stats here, in the last school year, 82% of the members that regularly attended maintained or increased their math grade, and 80% did the same with their reading, reading grade. So we do have an impact in these kid, with these kids, helping them study after school. So probably about two years ago, we, as a board, kind of looked internally to see what we could do to grow our services and do more for the community. And we polled students and kids, partners, donors, the school district, teachers, pretty much anybody that, that we could talk to, to see what that looked like as far as expanding our services. And the overwhelming response was a teen center, was something that Sedalia needs. Teens, like junior high and high school age kids, need a place to go, outside the house, that's supervised and safe, with specialized programming for kids that age. So, this is our, our project that we're working on. It's a teen center located on Third Street, right across from the Katy Depot. It's roughly 30,000 square feet of office space and programming space. Let's see, here's kind of the overall layout, we'll kind of dig into that a little bit more. So the, the, this side of the building is the, the kids' side. The high school age kids and junior high age kids each have a different games room or clubhouse, so it's gonna be a fun space where they can hang out and be with friends in a supervised, safe environment, and not mix, you know, high school and junior high age kids, so they each have their, their own space. Moving into the building a little bit, the junior high has some programming space for us to do special programming, but kind of the, the thing we're, we're pretty excited about is on the top there, the high school workshop and lab, which is a multi-use space that we're gonna do programming with high schoolers, but a lot of that is gonna have a workforce development sort of spin on it. We've already talked to a lot of partners in the community to help with that sort of programming, and it could be lifestyle skills, you know, anything from plumbing, electrical, woodworking, things that, trades that people are interested in hiring people for, but also some of these are basic life skills that some kids may not get at home, like how to unclog a toilet, or change a light switch cover, something pretty, pretty basic. So, and a lot of this plays into, I know you guys are kicking off a new CAPS program, and that's something that this would go hand in hand with, as well as the Olin Howard Workforce Development Center at the, at the community college. So it's just all different pieces to the puzzle to help these kids kind of get those skills for when they graduate. So we also have, you know, a full kitchen, dining room, that sort of thing, and then the other side of the building is, you can see the gymna, full-sized gymnasium, we have art and music room, and then a full administrative office, so we'd be moving from our current location into this building. And then down here, kind of on the bottom, you can see there's an office for Burrell. Mental health is something that we kind of keyed in on, something that we want to be able to add value to, and having an office space for a certified counselor through the Burrell, local Burrell office, to be able to offer to the kids and their families for, for support, is something we believe in, could be very, very beneficial, so. The big question everybody always asks is, you know, what's something like this gonna cost? Our total goal is $10 million, and it is a combination of local fundraising, foundations and grants, and government funding. Our, our goal for local fundraising is between $5 and $6 million. We are already at 4.6 to 4.7 million raised and committed right now, so we are well on our way to hitting our goal. So we're very excited about that. And anybody, now that we've kind of gone public, we, we've announced, we had a very generous donor that made a matching gift of $500,000, so anybody who wants to contribute to the campaign now can automatically double their investment by, by matching the $500,000 donation that we already have. So, one of the things, you know, what's, what's the cost of, of not, you know, supporting a project like this, or not supporting Boys and Girls Club in, in a community like Sedalia? A study out of University of Michigan says that every dollar invested in Boys and Girls Club equals roughly $10 in savings, future earnings, and the saved costs in that community further on down the road. So there is, you know, a lot of certified value to having Boys and Girls Club in the How you can help, you know, as, as the school district, you guys have been a tremendous partner for the Boys and Girls Club, you know, and it goes both ways. We've been great partners for, since 1990, you know, it's been a long time, and we continue that partnership, and we can all work together to, to help the same kids that we're all trying to help all day, every day. So it's, at this point, it's really an, an awareness piece, that we want to make sure everybody knows what this project is and how important it is for the community, and anything that we can do to, to make it happen, I think is important, so. And if anybody has any questions? Well, we're hoping to break ground fall this year, so if we can get our local fundraising goal, five and a half to six million, we, we can do that, and then some of the other funding sources are grants that have, and new market tax credits that have different kind of timetables attached to them, so. Alright, thank you very much.
Alrighty, there we go. So today, we are here to present an idea to you. We are Smith Cotton Traction, and we are presenting our, the action of traction. Okay, first, let's introduce ourselves. My name is Annie Mills, I'm a senior here at Smith Cotton High School.
I'm Abby Dag, I'm a junior.
I'm Bailey Spencer, and I'm a junior as well.
I'm Ava Benner, and I'm a sophomore.
And then I am Dominic, I'm a senior. So what is traction? Traction is a teen, or attraction, or a traffic leadership program that stands for teens taking action to prevent traffic crashes. At Smith Cotton High School, we are aimed to empower students to play an effective role in preventing traction, or traffic crashes, and promoting safe driving habits within our community. Through traction, students like us are equipped with knowledge and skills to address traffic issues and implement solutions. So in November of 2023, we went to a conference with Officer Ashley Stark and Mr. Doyle, one of our assistants, or one of our assistant principals at the high school. We went to St. Louis for a two-day conference. The second day was, we kind of did leadership activities, and kind of got introduced with MoDOT and some of the things, and we were tasked with coming up with a problem that was a safety problem within traffic within our community. So we came up with Tiger Pride, and Annie is gonna talk more about it.
So at this conference, we developed, the model at the conference was to design and develop natural leadership skills, to empower us and our behaviors, to relate traffic, to like, the effect of traffic crashes within our community. And so at this conference, we developed an action plan that helped us plan and carry out our specific project, and during the school year, to promote safe driving habits within our community, and Ava's gonna talk about the action plan that we developed at the conference.
Okay, so this is our action plan. So whenever we were at the conference, they gave us a sheet of paper, and they were just like, find the problem that you want to solve, and so this is what we did. So the problem we set was, the traffic problem at Smith Cotton High School is that Tiger Pride Boulevard gets overcrowded during dismissal and backed up in at least unsafe conditions. And then the goal we identified was to find a new solution to students exiting the parking lot on Tiger Pride Boulevard. And then our objective, we wanted to reduce the amount of time students spend exiting the parking lot and make safer conditions for student drivers. And then our obstacles, which we have had our fair share of, the main two ones were money and approval. And then some of the resources we used, we used Dr. Fraley, the school district, MoDOT, Sedalia Police Department, Pettis County, the Sheriff's Office, Missouri State Highway Patrol, and the city of Sedalia.
So on February 14th and 15th, we completed the experiment of the two left-turn lanes exiting Tiger Pride Boulevard onto Highway 65, with the assistance of Sedalia PD, Missouri Highway State Patrol, and then the school. It worked. Students had access to two left-turning lanes. We sent out a diagram a few days in advance, so they could get an idea of the layout of the road, and the only thing we asked was that school buses stay in the right-hand lane because of their long tail end, just because they wouldn't be able to make that turn in the left-hand lane safely, and it went smoothly. This is the diagram that we sent out to the student body ahead of time. It kind of shows the layout of the two lanes and how we had it set up. And both cars, both lanes were able to be used to turn left, and any cars wanting to turn right, all they had to do was be in the right-hand lane, and everyone was able to get where they needed to.
Okay, to kind of evaluate that data from after school on the February 14th, which are the days that we did the two-left turn lane, as you can see, we counted how many cars slash buses, buses went through that cycle, and then we timed every single cycle to see how many cars we could get through each cycle, and then we added up those times to see the total time, which was 13 minutes on February 14th, and then 15 minutes on February 14th. And then on February 20th and 21st, right after school, we treated it like a normal school day, where we didn't have the two-left turn lane, and we did the same thing. We counted the number of cars that went through a cycle, and then timed each one of those, and those were 20 minutes on February 20th and 19 minutes on February 21st. So as you can see, we did the two-left turn lanes, and we got more cars out each cycle, and it reduced the total time exiting the parking lot. And then, because of this data, we believe that adding the two-left turn lanes will make it safer for Tiger Pride Boulevard, because it will not only reduce the amount of traffic, which, when the traffic gets backed up, that can cause accidents, and then we also can reduce the time it takes for students waiting out, waiting on the parking lot, because I know from personal experience, when you're sitting there for minutes and minutes, and then you get onto that highway, and they just speed off. Like, students will not be as much, like, not have the tendency to speed as much, which also can cause traffic crashes as well.
We also did more data collection about a different problem that we, is kind of unrelated to the unsafe conditions. It is related to unsafe conditions on Tiger Pride Boulevard, but not after school. We did data collection on mornings, and we think that this problem can be solved, unsafe conditions on Tiger Pride Boulevards in the mornings, can be solved by changing start times of this high school and Loftus. I know that this has been in discussion, and we just want to give you more data to show you why this would be a good change, that these two schools are not overlapping, and people aren't using Tiger Pride Boulevard to get students to school at the same time. So we took data on November 16th, a day when Loftus is in session, and November 21st, a day when Loftus is not in session, between 7:30 and 8:30 a.m., and our traction group collected data on the following. We collected the number of total cars turning on a Tiger Pride on, on the day when Loftus is in session. There are 530, there was about 531 cars on the road, and then a day when Loftus is not in session, there was 400. We think that having 531 cars on Tiger Pride Boulevard at one time causes very unsafe condition. It causes the road to get backed up and onto the highway, and people turning into Loftus causes a lot of issues with traffic, getting back, like, it will cause it to be backed up. So that was the data for number of cars turning on Tiger Pride Boulevard total. The number of, of those cars that were turning into Loftus were 142, and the number of those cars turning into the high school parking lot were around 400. So, we believe that changing start times of Loftus and the high school will relieve the issue of having too many cars on Tiger Pride Boulevard in the morning, which causes unsafe conditions. In conclusion, we believe through the data that we have presented and collected to you, it shows that two changes will be beneficial, beneficial to address the problem of unsafe conditions on Tiger Pride Boulevard. Number one, creating two left-turn lanes onto Highway 65 off of Tiger Pride Boulevard to reduce having traffic backed up on the road, which might cause accidents, and to reduce the time it takes for students waiting to get out of the parking lot, which might cause speeding. And the second problem that we addressed to you today was changing start times in the mornings, that's with Cotton High School, and Loftus Early Childhood Center are not using the same road at the same time because of too many vehicles on this road, which also causes unsafe conditions. Thank you. Do you have any questions for us? Yes?
Unfortunately, with age, I've gotten addicted to dash cam videos, and one of the problems I always see with two left-turn lanes, or even two right-turn lanes, is keeping them in their respective lanes.
Yeah.
How are you going to solve that on days when you don't have a bunch of people up there observing what's going on?
I think a good way to do that is by having tape on, or like lines painted onto the road, to show students, maybe signage saying, make sure you stay in your lane whenever you're turning. Officer Stark, do you have something to add?
So the point of this presentation, for them to show you data today, is tomorrow we will be going for MoDOT in front of Public Works in the city. This group will be presenting their presentation. For your support in helping them, MoDOT will take action in that, in painting the lines to keep that separate, to answer your question. Yes, they did a very fabulous job. They have worked very hard and really put a lot of work into this, I'm very, very proud of them.
Just to clarify, once we have the two left-
Just to clarify, once we have the two left turn lanes, will that be permanent for all times of the day and not just dismissal? Yeah?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, I just wanted to check as someone who was in that line for thirty minutes after homecoming, I think you all have done a fantastic job. So bravo.
Yeah, and I appreciate you guys and all the work you've done. And I want to emphasize, I'm so happy that you're taking this to MoDOT because we have also met with MoDOT before and I hope you also or maybe emphasize that we need a right turn lane separate and going out on sixty-five, correct? Yes. So I wish you the very best of luck. I hope you have more influence than than I do with MoDOT.
How do we're able to do that much once a meeting?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow at ten AM with, we'll be meeting with MoDOT engineers, MoDOT, the person that represents us at MoDOT, Public Works Administrator, and the Traffic Control Group in Sedalia. Ten AM.
At City Hall?
It is actually at the police department. It's the first coalition meeting in Sedalia. Thank you guys again. The next presenter we have today is Jefton Glauster. He is going to presenting a presentation that he has been working adamantly on for this school year. I started it and he showed interest and I am supporting him through this matter, so.
Good evening, honored board members and rest of the audience. My name is Jefton Glauster. I'm a junior here at Smith Cotton High School and I'm here tonight to advocate for a project that has grown quite attached to me through the past few months. And that project is one that I've coined as emphasizing safety for tigers. To give some context, this project began in my US government class as a community engagement project. Shout out Mr. Jenke. But I've been able to reach this point thanks to many other faculty members that have supported me and guided me to be able to present this to you today, which I give a huge thanks to. So the highlight of this project is essentially pinpointing different sites around our grounds, which I believe that the creation of sidewalks and or crosswalks will be highly beneficial to the safety of our students, faculty, and community members. But of course, there's questions behind any creation project of building something. First, why should we build sidewalks? Second, where do we build these? Third, what is the estimated timeframe? And fourth, what is the estimated cost? This is something that I'll be going over with each site as I go through the presentation. First, safety. Why should we build? Many students and staff travel between SCHS and the Loftus for classes, activities, clubs, practices, and work. In my own experiences, having winter color guard or winter drum line, we've had to often travel between just walking across the Boulevard or through the muddy grass in between both centers, even when we've done performances such as new score going and singing for the Loftus children. This sidewalk would take them out of harms way. When traveling between facilities, I would like to see it extended up to the highway for students who walk and bike. I believe that we should do the most that we can to promote safety for our tigers on these grounds within our facilities. Next is traffic. Having a sidewalk between both facilities will further to the highway will allow pedestrian traffic to safely be removed from Tiger Pride Boulevard. This in turn will create smoother traffic flow for vehicles entering and exiting both facilities and eliminate the risk of accidents associated with the clashing of vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Now, for the first site I'd like to discuss on where, I believe it would be best to place a sidewalk continuing along Tiger Pride Boulevard up to the Loftus Center and along to Highway sixty-five. To as before, I talked about allowing safe flow to the Loftus Center and to students returning home by bike or by walking. For estimated timeframe and steps. First, it's going to take some planning. Just as you guys earlier had a meeting to discuss the building of sports complexes and facilities, this would as well take planning. With length dimensions, concrete picking, and having it approved by things such as DigSafe to establish grades, I believe that would take within a couple weeks. Along with this, the approval of the board. You guys are the jurisdiction and I am up to your free will, whether this is a project that you guys would like to pursue. And lastly, building. This on average takes about a few days and I also believe it'd be a good opportunity to get students involved. Whether it be CAPS or CTC, students who are focused on building foundations for facilities and homes could also take part on laying foundations for sidewalks around the grounds as a great learning and experience. Estimated cost. The costs of sidewalks vary because of labor, materials, and dimensions and design. Though on average, it is six to twelve dollars per square foot and by area, thickness can also play a factor with most sidewalks being between four to six inches. The next site I'd like to discuss is the anterior complex that is being built. Through one of the last board meetings, I saw how the plans had been approved for the sports complexes around our grounds on the campus. But something I came to realize is that sidewalks have not been laid out for some of these sports complexes. One that I'd like to highlight is the interior complex. With the addition of tennis courts, baseball field, and softball field, I believe that students and spectators will need access to these anterior sports complexes, whether it be around through the grass or through Tiger Pride Boulevard and the parking lot to the interior complexes. Community members will also have to attend to watch their kids or to watch these games occurring. And I believe the traffic flow has been very dangerous on our parking lots. I can't count the amount of times that I've seen fender benders and stuff occur as I've exited this school and I would hate to see that happen with pedestrians involved, especially now that students will have a reason after school every day to cross that parking lot to their sports complexes. To make this traffic flow safe for all involved, a crosswalk or sidewalk should be added to either the far side of the lot for students to be able to use or a crosswalk that will cross the entire parking lot from the main campus to this interior sports complex. Here are a couple of different crosswalk styles and inlaid sidewalks that could be added. Here are some resources and citations that I've used that you can look through the presentation later on on your own. And finally, a flyer that should be inside of each of your packets highlighting this presentation and the main points behind it. Thank you.
I very much appreciate that and I concur that that is a much-needed item moving forward. So I really appreciate your time and effort. Very professional. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. I know you said six to twelve dollars a square foot. So like. So I am actually working with the City of Sedalia on this. Okay, so how many square feet? I have not measured. I personally with the Loftus, since we have many kids coming from high school to the Loftus for reading groups or. That sort of thing. I have not measured the square foot. I am working with the City of Sedalia and I'm tagging him along to help for, there's possible funds within the city that can help us since it is a city road.
I would estimate between one to two thousand square feet based off of, you know, about three-foot wide sidewalk that would run that distance from the main campus to Highway sixty-five. Between a thousand to two thousand, it's gonna be somewhere between.
Couple of questions. What's your evaluation of the sidewalks or really not sidewalks, but the sides of Highway sixty-five, if they're safe for sidewalks?
Yeah. The boxes are kind of there right now.
So to answer your question, I don't really know, but I do know that the City of Sedalia is starting a coalition tomorrow as our first meeting within the city. And with that, will be improvement on sidewalks throughout the whole community and that may be one of them because MoDOT is involved as well.
One of the things to think about when you're thinking about sidewalks is not just this area, but we just had another present, you know, the first presentation we had down here. If you get something to the Katy Trail, you've now got another healthy way for students to go to that new center.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd be very happy to continue forward with this project and see what extensions can be done around the city. For now, it's really just one step at a time and I believe the Loftus is the most important site for the time being.
I'd agree with you.
I believe that the sports complex would be an easy addition considering that the facilities haven't been built yet and I would be happy to tackle project to that center if it is.
You might consider, you might consider talking to Parks and Rec about trails that could be accessible not only to, not only to bicycles, but also wheelchairs. How many students here use any sort of motorized wheelchair?
We do have one student.
Not motorized.
Not motorized, but we do have one student that has a wheelchair.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Very good job. Very nice.
Thank you.
Now at this time, we can move back on to the stage.
Okay, I think we're all back. Except Mr. Curry will go ahead and I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To the consent agenda, items four point one to four point four. Do I have a motion to accept those consent agenda items?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Four point five, payment of bills with Mr. Kimpton abstaining. Do I have a motion to accept consent agenda item four point five?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now we'll move to decisions, unfinished business, Dr. Fraley, the salary schedule.
Yes, I'm making a recommendation for the school board to approve for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five salary schedules, which includes a base increase for hourly staff at one dollar per hour and a salary base increase for salaried employees at twenty-five hundred as presented. This would represent over the, since two thousand, since the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year, for the certified salary schedule, you're talking about pretty just over twenty percent increase over that amount of time and about a thirty percent increase in our classified or hourly employees. So very proud that we're able to pass that along to our employees. I want to make mention that I don't know that we could expect those kind of increases moving forward. Everyone to know that, but I think we have extended ourselves as far as we can based on our revenue projections.
Are there any questions for Dr. Fraley regarding the salary schedule recommendation?
Move approval of the base increase in the salary, hourly classified rate schedules of one dollar an hour and base increase for all salaried employees of twenty-five hundred as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And Dr. Fraley, the FEMA shelter repairs at Skyline.
Yes, the last time I brought to you an agenda item to reject all bids, these bids were put out by the Pettis County Commission. This is the second round of bidding. We want to go ahead and move forward with the project so we can get a lot of the water redirected from the FEMA shelter at Skyline. Some of that on the west side will be redirected out to Thirty-Second Street. The other part of that is to redirect water to the east of that shelter that will be sent down over the hill. So I recommend that we approve this cost share at thirty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-three cents with the county commission.
Are there any questions for Dr. Fraley?
Move its approval.
I have a motion to approve and do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. Unanimously approved. Thank you. And next up is the Ms. Kimpton with the, is it VoIP?
Fun word. The phones.
Yes. Yes.
So last time I asked that we go for a second round of submissions for the RFPs. And after this second round, I'm recommending that we move to partner with HBS, which was previously Midwest Computec for a multitude of reasons. A few of them are, they propose Cisco phones, which are reliable, they have a reputation for having robust security features and uninterrupted service. Because we already partner with them, this makes the transition to ticketing and support and all of those things really seamless. They also offer WebEx, which is kind of like if you're familiar with Zoom or things like that, it's one of those. And that would be a seamless integration as well. I really like WebEx. I think our staff would also really like it. So overall, after the thirty-six month contract is over, HBS had the most valuable option that included support as well as ownership of the phones. Some of them suggested renting the phones. That's not something that we were interested in, so that was the most valuable option in our opinion. Questions?
No questions? I will then ask for a motion to approve HBS Midwest Computec in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-one cents for thirty-six months as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. Unanimously approved. Thank you. And next item is Mr. Pyle with the elevator maintenance agreement.
Yes, our Board of Education had the opportunity to look at a full-service maintenance agreement.
Yes, our Board of Education had the opportunity to look at a full-service maintenance agreement from MEI Total Elevator Solutions. Our district is in need of this type of support and MEI is the leader in the field in our area. Uh the agreement outlines the cost to complete the need, the needed service at each location within our district and the service frequency is also noted. I'm seeking Board of Education approval to accept the agreement with MEI at the annual rate of twenty-one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve. Oh, go ahead.
I apologize, but where in here does it have anything about response time?
The, it's, it is outlined through that um, I don't remember exactly where it's noted, but they, they respond to within twenty-four hours.
Okay, good, alright, I'm in, I know, I'm, I'm seeing that they're open twenty-four hours, I just don't know if they have, is there anything in here about you know, minimum response time or anything like that?
They, they point out that they will respond and then their, their, their goal is to next day service if possible, but Richie Simons has worked through, we've worked through them in the past and they've been very good to work with and they make every effort within twenty-four hours.
That's always been a problem with elevators out in, essentially out in outstate Missouri is getting quick response and not having them knocked out for two weeks or so. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions for Mr. Pyle? Not, I will hear a motion to approve the MEI Total Elevator Solutions Agreement in the amount of twenty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-six, six hundred and sixty dollars as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay and unanimously approved, thank you. And Mr. Curry, um twenty-four, twenty-five staffing needs and extra duty stipend additions?
Yes, thank you. Um District Administration Team met recently to discuss the immediate needs for moving into next year, especially since uh we're coming off of two years of many ESSR-funded positions, we wanted to evaluate the ongoing need for uh the implementation of those positions that we had. So, the four is, is a list of things that we've identified as needs uh continuing into next year. We did analyze class sizes. We looked at all of our closed and vacant positions that we have on our book of business uh to utilize all positions that we had available to us. So what we'll go through first off are the certified positions that are in need for next year. Uh you'll see the teacher title one for SMS. That position, uh as we transitioned to a title school at SMS this year, you'll recall that we had moved that instructional coach position into federal funding uh earlier this year. Uh it was basically an even one-to-one swap as we didn't fill that position that we had on the books after we created a new position for the title one instructional coach. Uh this will be a same similar situation as Mr. Frye's transitioning from two-man teams into three-man teams will present us an opportunity to save one teaching position next year at the middle school. That position essentially is what we'll swap out for this creation, uh created a new position. Uh but for us to move that into uh federal funding, we have to approve the creation of that position. So, that's the first position there. You'll see a similar thing with the next three positions are those title instructional coach positions. We currently have instructional coach positions on the books for junior high and high school. Uh yet again, moving those into federally funded positions needs a board approval for us to create those positions. Uh in turn, we'll just keep, leave those instructional coach posi- positions vacant currently and it's essentially a one-to-one swap, but we will be able to accommodate those out of federal funds moving forward. The same thing with our special services social worker position, that was an ESSR-funded position this last two years. Uh we are going to wait as we need to see final uh title funding and how that will come in, usually later into May, as I'm told by Ms. Brownfield. We'll figure out exactly how much funding we'll get in a certain title fund that would uh actually pay for this uh position. So we will hold on actually hiring that position, but we want to go ahead and get it to, create it again as moving it from an ESSR position into a titley fund, a federally funded position. Uh but again, once we have a final better understanding of what our uh federal budgets are going to be, then we'll look at whether or not we fill that position or not. Um so essentially what we've done in all those first few uh four positions, five positions are, uh we're looking to approve those federally funded positions. And then the only locally funded position that we're asking for is an at-risk uh position at Whittier High School. Um Mr. Birdsong has announced that he is moving on, going to finally fully retire and so that need is there for a full-time position at Whittier. And so that would be a locally funded position, uh the only certified position that we're asking for uh this evening. The next uh group of positions are classified positions. Um as we again moved into uh the elementary format over the last uh few years at the middle school, uh has been fully an elementary format and so they actually utilized an ESSR position for one of their um elementary specials instructors. Uh it was used for remediation, but is also used as part of their elementary specials rotation. So in order to maintain a specials rotation at the middle school in an elementary format, they need uh an instructional assistant for their computer lab. So that's the first ask there is the IA at SMS. And then um through an open uh unused position over the last few years, we have been staffing paraprofessionals at both Hebrew Hunts, um Horseman, uh through an open teaching position that was not filled. And so, the need for adding those paraprofessional positions at Hebrew Hunt, Horseman and Parkview are just needs based on uh student numbers and providing adequate support for all the students that they have at those locations. And then also as we've, we know moving forward, we have uh groundbreaking coming up of our athletic complex out here at the high school. We've done research uh through Mr. Middleton and his contacts as well as some of our own contacts and speaking with other districts that have added facilities based like this and how they accommodated uh, you know, the increased need for maintenance and cleaning of such a, a large area. So, uh the next thing that you see before you are the addition of a maintenance groundkeeper position uh that would work for the, for the athletic complex, but be, you know, able obviously to work across district grounds, uh across the, the entire district. And then the last thing is uh an additional custodial position uh that would work through the high school in helping to provide support in the evening for cleaning of all those facilities as well as, you know, in the downtime in the winter when that, uh the outside uh complex isn't being utilized as much, they'll pull that person inside and we still have obviously volleyball or I mean basketball and wrestling and all sorts of stuff going on in the, in the gym wing. So, there will be plenty of use uh to, to keep these people busy. And then last group, the last section down there, extra duty stipends. Um you recall we had included a nighttime and weekend director of grounds, uh extra duty stipend. This is similar in the first one there with our extra duty night safety and security. Our director of safety and security, uh Ms. Stark handles numerous phone calls throughout the night on the weekends, addressing alarms and calls trying to prevent the dispatching of police or the fire department to any of our locations should a burglary alarm go off or a fire alarm go off. Her and uh Mr. Simons combat that very well together, but uh this need is, is arising again from the amount of time that she puts in in the nights and the weekends that is not necessarily accounted for in her uh salary. Also, um over the last couple of years and at the end of this year, our mentors uh that we've had as retired teachers working in our elementary buildings and this year, uh not in our elementary buildings lately, but in this year, our junior high and high school, our mentor, uh teacher is retiring, fully retiring, that was a five fifty position previously and so all of our elementary staff and now will be our secondary staff, uh will need that extra support. And so that extra support uh is in our plans to be provided by our instructional coaches and so this stipend will again allow them to focus directly on mentoring new staff. It's, it's somewhat something that they already do, but it's the amount of time that they're going to need to put in, especially with, you know, as we've had new staff uh over the years. This is something that uh uh we feel is just fair in providing them an additional stipend for the amount of time that they're going to accommodate new staff.
Yeah, and I'm, add as a big part of that, it will be our new teachers that we're bringing on in the summertime uh to work with them before, before they start. Give them extra attention before and after school as well. Part of, one of the goals that I set forth before the board is to, you know, create uh the recruitment retention piece, the development of professional development, et cetera. And this goes hand in hand with developing a program to where we will uh have the pieces in place to bring our, our new staff in to make sure that we uh give them adequate training and resources to be successful.
Very much so. And there's, the last two asks there and their extra duty or uh an extra duty score crew at the junior high and one at the high school. An additional goal that we've had uh from Dr. Fraley and through our activities department is uh providing more announcing at some of our uh contests for our junior high and our high school, uh sub-varsity level activities. And with the addition again of our, our complex that will be finalized out here, uh we know that we will have the opportunity to announce for those items or for those activities because it's included in, in the process of completing this plan. So, where we haven't maybe had the opportunity at outside locations for us to have announcements, uh we will have those for cer- for certain. And so, um we look forward to providing that service for our, our junior high and our sub-varsity contest as well. So, um that again, um it's, we've added a lot, um where it seems like we're asking a lot. Again, I'd point out that a lot of those were coming uh from federal funded uh resources. Um I would mention that we have or we're going to, moving forward, we're going to uh look to pay benefits to our federally funded positions out of our local fund, which will allow us to cover hopefully more of these positions, uh salary position, the salary portion of their position out of the federal funds where we can pay the benefits side out of local funds, so allowing us to uh move more positions into those categories and still be able to cover the benefits portion out of our local side. So, um you know, that moving forward as we finalize and we look at uh those final numbers as the budgets more come in and they get better sense of what the numbers are going to look like on the, on the title side and the federal fund side. I can see us coming back with some asks on instructional assistance, uh especially for EL as Ms. Brownfield feels strongly that she'll have federal funds to cover uh those assistants. We've had them previously this year uh covered under ESSR, which again would be why we would need to ask for that because it would be a change in uh funding uh resource for them. Yes, Mr. Gordon?
When you talk about putting teachers, you know, teachers in that are paid by federal funds, I need to ask a really, and I apologize, this is going to be an incredibly dumb question, but teacher title one through uh teacher title instructional coach, those are, are those people eligible for tenure?
Yes.
Okay, so you have a situat- yeah, I don't mind that we're using federal funds to build this up and I will apologize for repeating, I was around when a thing called revenue fund, revenue sharing got closed out in the uh late eighties, early nineties. Are we prepared for the impact on the balance sheet if all these people that were essentially moving on to some kind of federal payroll come back to us?
Right, I think I follow what you're asking there and that's why, um especially like so, for example, with that middle school teaching position, we're actually going to have a middle school teaching position that we'll still have on the books that will show as unfilled because we're creating this position in an effort to move it into a federally funded position. The same with our instructional coach positions, we have those on the books currently, but we have the opportunity to cover them under federal funds. We just have to create the position ahead of time now so that we can fill them and then should the need come back where they can't be covered under federal funds, we still have those positions on our local books.
They're already budgeted for.
Okay, you know, I'm just looking ahead at, at uh federal funding for a lot of these title things and I can see that disappearing and I can see a whole Department of Education disappearing if some of my fellow Republicans have their way and I.
If, and I, and I understand what you're talking about, I, I know the politics and I know what's been said uh by that party uh potentially and if, if that were to come to pass, then we, we would be looking at a complete and utter overhaul of public education as we know it across the United States of America.
I understand, but as far as the federal funding and our ability to absorb that, I would, I would hope that we would continue those programs even if they're not federally funded.
It would be incredibly difficult to do so if all federal funding was pulled.
Okay, I understand that.
It would be, it's, you know, we're talking millions, I don't know off the top of my head, but several million dollars.
Okay, alright.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Curry? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve additional certified, classified and extra duty positions as presented.
I'll ma- I'll make that motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all not in favor say nay and unanimous approval. And Ms. Brownfield, the Marzano?
Marzano.
Okay.
So, we have the CBE grant that you saw at the last meeting where we talked about uh the, that grant being professional development. So this is the contract and agreement with Marzano to continue that work, so this is all paid for by that grant.
Are there any additional questions for Mrs. Brownfield last time? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
As presented, and I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you. And Ms. Kimpton again on the Smith Cotton Junior High auditorium sound upgrade.
Yes, we recently had a few vendors come and assess the junior highs auditorium, which is in desperate need for an audio upgrade. Um so, based on the two vendors that came, I'm recommending that we go with KCAV um based on the thirty-nine thousand dollar bid. Questions?
Any questions for Ms. Kimpton? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the scope of work from Kansas City Audio Visual for Smith Cotton Junior High Auditorium Sound System Upgrade in the amount of thirty-nine thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars and seven cents as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay, thank you. And Mr. Pyle, the SpedTrak Special Education and Five-O-four contracts?
Yes, this today's school district two hundred will utilize Infinite Campus for our school information system in the next school year, twenty-four, twenty-five. Our special education and Five-O-four departments need a product that works well with Infinite Campus that will allow our team members to create and store evaluations, individualize education plans and also the Five-O-four plans. SpedTrak leads the field with special education documents and over ninety-five percent of our area schools utilize SpedTrak as their source. Uh the Five-O-four templates will be a positive addition to our team as, as right now we don't have a, an actual program that allows that, so that'll be a type's efficiency for our team in that area as well. So, I'm seeking Board of Education approval to accept the five-year term subscription agreement with SpedTrak at the rate of twenty-six thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The agreement continues throughout the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year with a price increase of four percent annually over the term of the contract.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle?
Okay, you know what I'm gonna ask, is this gonna make things easier for our special ed teachers?
Yes, it will, it, it will. There's, the amount of work that is still within IEP and the Five-O-four will still be there, but this is gonna be in a, in a more efficient uh product for our team. So yes, there are special education coordinators and some of our special education leaders. Uh we've attended a conference, the, the sales rep and went through this program with us here at our school district and it was very positive. Our team's excited about this opportunity.
So it's worth that twenty-six thousand two forty-five?
Yes, sir, it will, it will be helpful to our team.
Thank you.
Will it integrate well, will it integrate well with the Infinite Campus?
It will.
So for the state reporting piece?
Yes, they, uh Megan Engel on our team has looked at a lot of Mrs. Kimpton and some other team members, we've researched that and this is the best partnership between the two.
Will the, will the teachers, regular classroom teachers that have like a co-teaching or have a Sped kid in their class, will they still have access to be able to see what the accommodations are?
Yes, they will.
Okay.
They call it a snapshot of the IEP or a snapshot of the Five-O-four, so yes, they'll work very well together.
Good.
Are there, are there any other questions for Mr. Pyle regarding this? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, uh the SpedTrak five-year subscription agreement in the amount of twenty-six thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars with a four percent annual increase as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay and a unanimous approval, thank you. Uh Mr. Curry, the junior high track assistant coach position? Mr. Curry, the junior high track assistant coach position?
I know Mr. Foster's here as well if he needs to speak to any of this, but junior high track started last week to almost probably record numbers of a hundred and twelve or so students to start the week last week. And grade checks for third quarter final grades are this evening and the grades will finalize. And so we still anticipate, Mr. Foster's been tracking grades closely beginning last week on all of our students at the junior high track. And, and we're still anticipating over a hundred student athletes to remain on our track team at the junior high level. So currently we have one head coach, we have three assistant coaches, and that student athlete to coach ratio is just too high. It's too high, you know, and creating concerns for supervision as well as, you know, in track and field, you have so many different activities, field events, running events. Not only do you need supervision, but you need more people to help provide some better support and, and instruction for those events. So we're asking for an additional junior high track coach position. Starts as a category eight position at sixteen hundred dollars and I think we'll get the value out of that position very much so.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Curry?
I have one. Do we have anybody who's already ready to?
Mr. Foster has identified a person and I think already got a verbal commitment that they'd be willing to do the position, so.
Okay. Because I'm, I'm the track booster president and they are coming out of the woodwork.
Mm-hmm. It's a good problem to have.
How many kids do we have at the high school level, the track program?
Over a hundred.
So nine through twelve and we've got over a hundred, seven through eight?
Yep. I know that because I'm making track snack bags for all of them for all of their events. So there you go.
Get to making.
Any other questions for Mr. Curry? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the addition of one junior high assistant track coach position to begin in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And unanimous. And we're going to exit the stage again for our presentation on seventeen hundred Lafayette.
The, what's in the board packet for decision is to go out and forbid this, the potential building for the new central office location on seventeen hundred West Lafayette. We have final renderings from the architects and I wanted to show that to the board. In addition to this agenda item, is also a package to redo the current concession stand for the athletic complex that was left out of the whole package because that's a different type of remodel and construction. So we've been advised by Hollis Miller that we, if we throw these two jobs together, it'll benefit us in the, in the bid process. I thought you all might have entrance of what they've come up with. So overall design, you'll see a change in, in the parking area. You see that kind of a, I'll call it a trapezoid or whatever, shape in front in the blue lines. It's taking out those parking spots right there and creating kind of a, an entrance in green space. So you have more of a focal point on that building because currently it's just a flat, flat building with no real direction as to where do I enter? One thing, this is the, the floor plan of the proposal. And should bids come in favorable and we can move forward with this project, we will no longer have to get down off the stage and sit in the auditorium. You'll see to the upper right would be a board meeting room area where we would have most of our regular board meetings, with the exception if we, if we needed to, if we're going to have a, a lot of people present expecting a big turnout and we'd move that back over here potentially. As you digest that a little bit, if you look at the lower left corner of the building, that would be the tech area. Remember, we talked about bringing all central office or district level personnel and programs over into this building. So that would free up a good bit of space over to junior high school where it's currently located. Be moving all the district servers into a server room that you will see kind of in the middle of that, that corner quadrant. We'll have an overhead door and a receiving room for computer towers, Chromebooks and et cetera. Just to the right of that would be our vault. That whole area, the service room, the server room and the vault area will be reinforced area with concrete and et cetera. And the server area certainly will have its own cooling system. That would be a backup cooling system in case power goes out. As you look at that, do you, anybody have any questions? Place for a tornado, we would be in the vault. Correct. Mr. Gardner?
Will the, will the cooling process for the server room be able to be used to heat the rest of the building?
We've been told by the engineers that the, the amount of heat generated is not significant enough to, to make much of an impact. In the capturing thereof.
The vault's going to be rated in terms of what EF what?
I don't, I don't know that anything's rated for EF five. It'd be the same basically as a FEMA structure. Other questions on the floor plan? It gives us a, an area up where the mouse is here, a small conference area to meet with parents and other meetings where they, we don't necessarily need the public to be accessing the office space. So it makes it convenient for that. We have a larger conference room down here in the middle that would be used for planning and other meetings that occur, whether that be with contractors or bid openings or any variety of meetings that happen on a constant basis. You see a workroom, a kitchen area.
So that, that entrance will be the secure type entrance?
That's correct. If you see the, up here, they enter a vestibule and then they're kind of contained in there until they're let in to the main area here. And then they would be contained in this area because this door and this door to the main office areas would be key card doors.
Conference room, it looks like one forty-three would also be for some other dormitory having a, if they're wanting to actually inspect to a sunshine hall or west.
Yes, absolutely. Have an HR enrollment area. We bring employees, new employees in to go through the, the enrollment process, do all that paperwork, have a specific area for that. Bring families in that are going to enroll students. So this would be a district, district enrollment center. They could come to central office to receive that assistance. Other questions on the floor plan? Yes, it, it is raised slightly. All right. Now let's see what some things will look like. Or supposed to look like. So they went through some, some different type of design options with our team to kind of get a feel of what style we wanted. And we, kind of the style from the central office, you know, survey led them to kind of a traditional yet modern kind of combination look because they still like kind of a traditional type of, of, of office, formal, you know, some wood, wood grains, some wood colors. Give you another aspect. We went with the, we kind of went big on the front. They gave us different design options to, for the front entrance. And of course, when we saw this particular design entrance, we kind of all fell in love with that one instead of just a kind of a flat front, to build that out. And we, we chose to elect to go with the boulders, landscape boulders instead of steel bollards. I thought that looked much better. You'll see the inside, so the picture on your right as you walk in and you know, you're, you're welcoming feature wall from the public. The one on the bottom is looking the other direction out through the main entrance. Questions here?
Is there going to be any reinforcement of the brick and the glass, the bullet resistant?
The, the reception window, we discussed making it bulletproof like the one we currently have. As far as that area, we would, we would currently, the plan is to do the, the resistant film like we have on all our other structures. To, to go to all bulletproof proof glass, it's just, I don't know that the risk is worth the cost. I guess, you know, it's hard to put a, a price on that, I understand. But the weight and heaviness of that change that, changes that entire structure quite a bit. Hard to have a clear sign of, sign of sight, yes, or line of sight. This door is actually, that won't be there, that will be a window instead of, of a door. Had not changed that.
Is, is the, is the current, that's currently brick over cement block?
I, I, I think it's just, it's a frame brick structure. This gives you some individual looks of what the interior would look like from the small conference room in the front with a, with a glass window to see, you know, be able to have visibility into that. The same thing with the, the larger conference room. This area here is obviously the workroom slash, you know, kitchenette area for employee lunch. This would be the actual copy room, workroom, what it might look, look like. One of the halls, up here, the, the numbers correspond. I don't know how well you can see that. If I enlarge it, then we can't see the other pictures. So we have a little storage wall with extra cabinets up here. This would be your executive hallway, the assistant superintendents and the directors. One of the staff entrances is number eight. Back in that area there. See there's some of the options that they presented us. Boardroom at the ceiling. So you have the difference of going with different accents on the ceiling and on the backdrop for the wood panels. That would be what the board meeting room, as you can see, it's, it's not elevated far, Mr. Gardner. It's just up just a tad for the audience viewing. And then that would be the boardroom with a wood paneled ce- ceiling or wood ceiling versus the drop ceiling tile. Well, that, that's, that would be part of the audio visual, be part of the bid package. As you can see in the boardroom, you have two, a couple of proposed monitors in the building right here. So we have double screens that the audience can see and then the board can see from the Questions on that? Some of the different color, color schemes that they've thrown out. And then the final, once again, that would be the front, proposed front. Questions? All right. That kind of concludes. That kind of concludes this part of the program. So the two different ceiling options in the boardroom, I should say, those are alternate bids that will be in the bid package.
So what you're needing from us tonight on a decision is?
Permission to go through with the bid project or bid process for those.
Okay.
Two projects?
Do I have a motion to, are there any other questions for Dr. Fraley? Sorry. Do I hear a motion to approve the bid process for Seventeen Hundred Lafayette and renovations of the existing concession stand as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. And the motion carries, thank you. And then under information, the only thing there is is a reminder. No, wait. Oh, Mr. Pyle, I'm sorry. The facility improvement projects that are going on.
Yes, our Board of Education, last month's meeting approved of our long-range facilities plan. Is coming to the board tonight with information once again, and for our community members that may be listening in, that we are going to pursue estimates and take bids to solicit for those projects. So included in those projects were new drop ceilings for the Sadeya Middle School, concrete work at Horseman Elementary School, new fencing in Horseman Elementary and Washington Elementary Schools, turf installation under the playground equipment at elementary schools and Sadeya Middle School. And then just a quick reminder that we did install turf at Heber Hunting last summer, so we'll catch the other elementary buildings up along with the Sadeya Middle School. And also we're going to solicit bids and estimates for new LED lighting for the Smith Cotton High School Gymnasium, so.
Lot of projects going on, yeah.
These are some from the facilities plan that was approved last month that we feel that we could move forward with successfully this school year. Some of the others, of course, for twenty-twenty, or summer of twenty-five, it'll be a whole different list.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Pyle on this information he's provided? Last item is just a reminder to board members regarding the twenty-twenty-four MSBA Advocacy Day being Tuesday, April ninth, in Jeff City, hosted by MSBA that also provides us an afternoon visit to the Capitol Building, starts that morning at nine-thirty. And they've kind of changed up the schedule where there is keynote speakers, a lunch, and roundtable discussion. And so please let Lisa know as soon as you can so she can make all of the, get us all registered, those that can go. It is, like I said, Tuesday, April ninth, so if you could let her know, maybe within the next week or two, just, well, spring breaks next week, so skip that. But if you know tonight whether or not, even if it's a no, go ahead and let her know. And I will ask for a motion to adjourn to closed executive session.
Move to adjourn the regular session meeting and notices hereby given that the Board of Education of the Sadeya School District Number Two Hundred, having duly voted to close its meeting as authorized by Section six-ten dot zero-two-one, RSMO subsection one, legal actions, three, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting, thirteen, personnel records, fourteen, records which are protected, eighteen, public safety or law enforcement, and nineteen, security system and structural plans. By law of the Missouri statutes, will conduct a closed meeting immediately following adjournment of regular session meeting on March eleventh, twenty-twenty-four at Smith Cotton High School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And a roll call vote?
Dr. Bart Fagan?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Groupie?
Aye.
Mr. Kimpton?
Aye.
Mrs. Moon?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Traitor, good side.
Meeting is adjourned, have a great spring break.